Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome back, welcome in. This is our first meeting of this new academic year. I don't know, every year it feels like we were just here, but it also feels like I haven't seen you in years. But it's good to be back and it's good to welcome some new faces. And my name is Lori Toasty. I'm Chair of the School Committee. I'm gonna have my colleagues introduce themselves to you so you know who we are and where we are.
Good evening. I'm Mark Terry. I'm the Vice Chair of the School Committee.
Paul Kendall.
Tina Fatanides.
Marcy Culverwell.
Go ahead, Chris, just in case.
Chris Matthews.
And this is Abhishek. I just wanted you to know that you could introduce yourself. He's part of our team here.
Chris, do you want to add a title to that?
Yeah.
Chris Matthews, Director of Finance and Operations.
Yeah. Abhishek Student.
Student.
We're so happy to have him. And we're happy to have you welcome in. We start each meeting by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that celebrates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening includes our call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption, public participation. The reports and presentations include new staff introductions, warrant approvals, superintendent's report, and the assistant superintendent's report. And our action items, discussion updates, and votes this evening include: appoint superintendent to the Board of Directors for the Accept Collaborative, nutrition services, proposed meal cost increase, safety committee appointments, appointment to working group subcommittees, MASC/MASSS Conference, November 12th through the 14th, school choice allocation for AHS auditorium, school choice allocation to buildings and departments. The consent agenda includes approval of gifts and donations, grant allocations, then we will have reports of school committee members, and then we will adjourn. So I will ask everybody if you're okay with the order of business this evening. And I see that you're all here. And is there any problem with the order of agenda items? You're good with that?
All good.
Awesome. Okay, so I will start with asking if there's anybody here from the public that wants to say a few words, and I happen to know that there is tonight. We're so happy when somebody says yes to that. I gotta move this down. Okay, hold on. There we go.
Good evening, everybody. So good to see you all. I hope you all had a good summer. I'm Brandy Kinsman. I'm a member of the Select Board. I'm here with Josh Wixler from Ashland High School. And we just wanted to give you a little bit of information you might have heard. We're here tonight really to talk about Ashland Day, which is a really... It's been a bit of a whirlwind, but we wanted to kind of give you a little information of what we've been up to, especially since Ashland Public Schools have been just a huge part of this and which we are so grateful for. So just a little bit of background, I have never done Ashland Day ever, but the Ashland Day Committee, who usually does Ashland Day, mid-July, we heard that they didn't have the funds to do Ashland Day. And so that they didn't plan Ashland Day, which is a huge, huge thing for our community. This is the 39th year of Ashland Day. And I know my kid has grown up with Ashland Day. I know a lot of people have grown up with Ashland Day. So myself, Claudia Bennett from the Select Board, Josh Wixler from the high school, and Chrissy Reynolds, who owns Anne Marie's Dance and is a member of the ABA, the Ashland Business Association Board, the four of us kind of came together and wanted to see if there was anything we could do. And thankfully, Josh had this framework from Pumpkin Fest from three years ago. And we looked at the framework that he had put together, and we thought we can do this. So we started this literally five weeks ago. And our goal was to raise $15,000 and then do all the steps needed to put together a large-scale event for 4,000 people. So we are all set with Ashland Day this year. We are... It's gonna be on Saturday, October 4th, from 11 to 4 at Stone Park. And we have a rain date, which is new this year, on Sunday, October 5th, same time, same place. And what I think, for me personally, has been amazing and part of this experience has just been how the community support has really rallied behind this. So in less than three weeks, we were able to raise over $15,000. And we have been off and running with a volunteer group of probably 20, 25 people. Tina's been a part of it. We've got some great people working on this. And I just wanted to, first of all, let you all know also just to say thank you because there have been a lot of work on a lot of people's parts to help support this and make this happen. Initially, we had thought this was going to go through Ashland High School. And so we had a GoFan page and things like that, which we were taking electronic donations. And in working with Chris Matthews and Christine Graham over at the high school, and our staff here over at Town Hall, we moved that over under the Ashland Select Board. So now the funding is going into donations through the Select Board. And I'm trying to think of other things that we... So but, you know, we're in the middle of finalizing a lot of the preparations. We have about 60 booths already signed up. We have entertainment. We have, I think, 14 or 15 food vendors. We are trying to expand the universe of typical Ashland Day and try to be as inclusive as possible. So we're doing things that Ashland Day has never had before. We've really opened it up to partners in the community. We have, like, the MWRTA is going to be a part of it. The YMCA is gonna have a huge presence. We have music from a variety of both local people in Ashland, and then also we have a very popular Indian band that's going to be there and some Indian dancing. And we're just very proud of sort of the support that we've been doing. So both from an individual, we had done some sponsorships from a business standpoint, and individuals have also been extraordinarily generous. So I just wanted to say thank you, especially to Chris and to the support of the Ashland Public Schools. Ms. St. Cora has been amazing. And so we just wanted to come and give you a little bit of an update. And also, just as an FYI, we are gonna be having a town booth at Ashland Day. And anyone that would like to come and be a part of that school committee, other committees too, we're opening it up for those as well.
Him really wants to do the pie thing.
Ew, I'll be in Vermont, though. We deliver.
So just to let you guys know, I had this idea that it would be fun to have all the town committee people and elected officials have a booth that says, you know, throw a pie, you know, to raise money for Ashland Day, figuring that that would be a really great way to raise funds, which I think it would be, but it's been a very lukewarm... I haven't really gotten a lot of... Like, I'm all in on it because I think it would be fun, but I don't know if that's... So...
Miss Kinsman, would you like to share with the audience what my response to you was on that?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Mark's not feeling it either.
I thought we should have thrown it at her.
So, but anyway, and I just wanted to also just say, none of this would have been possible without Josh. I mean, he is the most organized, like, I mean, and this has been a rabbit hole of a project. So when I tell you that we probably spend every non-working day moment working on this, we've been... It's been a labor of love, but it's amazing. And also, it's just, the community has really come out and said, they're so happy that we're doing this, and the support is totally worth it. So, and just personally, it's a great distraction for a very recent empty nester. So, but Josh, do you want to add anything?
It's moving along. We've been talking... I've been talking with the Student Council kids, and next Wednesday, they're gonna be signing up to help with lots of the different jobs at Ashland Day, both things they've done in the past, but also just general helping to make it run stuff. And they're excited about that. And it should be good, and we're hoping for good weather.
Yeah. And we also have a secret weapon. Ella Fong...
Besides Josh?
Besides Josh. Josh's counterpart, I'd say. Ella Fong, who is an Ashland High School graduate and is a student at Northeastern and wants to be an event planner, has been extremely helpful, and she's running all the booth organizations. And so it's moving really fast, and she's amazing. So thank you to Ella and to Chrissy and Claudia. And it's kind of like the four of us are a really good team, so it's been good.
Just come out?
Yeah.
Come join us.
Yeah, well, it's amazing what you've been able to put together in such a short time. And we appreciate you, both, very much, and other people on your team as well.
And just as a thank you also, you know, we've been working with a lot of people here in Town Hall that have really kind of stepped up to help Cindy Cincotta and Stephanie Pemberton and finance Diane Mortensen and the Select Board's office, our DPW, our fire, our police, everyone is really supporting this in a way that, like, I think I said to Josh, I'm like, I think I was naive when we first said, oh yeah, we could do this, and not really understanding the scale and the scope, just thinking, oh yeah, we'll do an event, that's great. And then you realize just how much it is. So, but anyway, thank you for your time tonight.
Well, I was thinking, as you're talking, like, I'm so glad you're here doing this because I thank all of us who have lived in this town for decades or however, like, kind of take it for granted we're gonna show up and it's gonna be Ashland Day, but to hear you say everything that goes into it, and I hope people are tuned in tonight especially to hear that because that makes it all that much more special. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. New staff introductions.
So I think we will start... We had over 50 new faculty and staff hired throughout the summer, and actually, as recently as probably the last couple days, we're still filling a number of positions. So I want to first thank the folks who are here, made some time tonight. As you can tell, we don't have all 50 folks that we've hired, but we have quite a few staff and our principals and assistant principals and directors who show up to support this and run through the list, if you will. So we're gonna start with Nutrition Services, if you want. Yeah, you're up first, Regina. If anyone's here, great. If not, we won't go through all the names, but I'm just sharing the slideshow here. If we do have folks, great.
Our staff are present.
Okay.
But you're here, thank you.
I am, for another reason as well.
Yes, we know, yeah.
But Danielle Haglin, Wendy Astarga, Diane Butterman, and Patricia Dundon, our all-new staff members in Nutrition Services, and we're happy to have them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pittaway, Amanda, as you know, I think we... Did we officially introduce Amanda at the end of last year?
No.
To the community? No, we did not.
I think some of us met around the first day of...
Yeah. So Amanda Curley is our new, as I said in the admin team meeting yesterday, Executive Director, Director of the Pittaway School. So I've already been ribbed a few times this week. So Amanda has ascended into that role where Sarah Davidson is now the Special Ed Team Coordinator, if you will, at Pittaway. So Amanda.
Yes, so I'm Amanda Curley. Nice to meet you all. I'm also an Ashland resident. I have kids in the school system as well. But we have three new staff at Pittaway in addition to myself. We have Lucy Vincent, Michelle Williams, and then Mary Jo Plutz, who was actually at Mindes last year, but she's coming to join us at Pittaway this year as an ESP.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Pete.
Quite a few new hires at Warren's.
I can see that.
So we do have, in second grade, we have Emma Bailey. She was one of our student teachers last year that stayed with us in this role. New ABA ESP 2 in Tim Bopri and Midori Kakaparthi. New ESP Marie Owasu. New ABA ESP 2 Parthi Oza. New first grade teacher, Celia Penich. New special education teacher in our RISE program, Kat Sable. New ELL staff member that was sharing with the Mindes School, Brittany Sacco. Another ABA ESP 2, Isabella Share. Another second grade teacher, Erica Hisonian. EL teacher with us, Erin Schwartz, who's also a parent and resident of our town. And then finally, a new BCBA that we share with Pittaway, Agnes Sishetik. Tough one to pronounce, I had to ask her. But no, we're really excited. Everyone's fitting in really well. They've really started the year in outstanding fashion with all of our students.
Awesome.
Great. And we'll jump to the David Mindes School. As you know, Kate Altman is in her first year as Principal of the David Mindes School, and...
Congratulations.
Under the superintendent's report, we'll get into the opening day, but...
Welcome to your new job, Kate.
I will say this while Kate is here, publicly, just outstanding work in terms of, on that first day of unexpectedness of, I'll be accurate, yellow jackets, not just bees, but to be clear to, you know, those on Boston.com who are complaining about my choice of words. But Kate handled it with grace, as I said, so professional, so caring, and we're very fortunate to have her leading the Mindes School.
Thank you. First five minutes, my very first day.
There you go.
Yep. So we have not as many new hires as Pete at Warren, but we have Nancy Dunlap in our special education RISE program, and she is here with us today. Thank you, Nancy, for being here. Allison DePrelle is our new language-based teacher. Pervabora is an ESP supporting Nancy in the RISE program. Brandy Core is filling in for a one-year, long-term fifth grade leave. Serena Valentine is our new band teacher, full-time band teacher for fourth and fifth grade. Beth Jones, our new Assistant Principal, sitting right here, very lucky to have her right from Shrewsbury. Brittany Sacco, as Pete said, we're sharing with Warren as our new EL teacher. Maria Wentworth is filling in as a long-term Grade Four sub for Christine Claffey, who should be returning in December. We have Herb Grace, who is also filling in for another maternity leave we have in PE for Bethy Nicholson, who will be returning in around the middle of October, who is also the father of Caroline Grace at Warren, you may know. Amanda Smith is also another long-term sub we have in Grade Five, who will be supporting Mary Soderberg this year. Thank you.
I also have a long list, and I think I might win for people in attendance. Yay! So joining us at the middle school, yep, Tess Anketell, eighth-grade ELA teacher, ESP Punambagya, new art teacher, Kat Brunel, new ESP who started Monday, Ron Dowd, new ESP who started yesterday, Larissa Freitas, alumni and new ESP, Jack Mackin, here tonight, sixth-grade writing teacher, Allison Chapinko, who's here tonight, another alumni and new wellness teacher, Jared Schwartz, who's here tonight, Carly White, special education teacher, Deb Eisen, who is our RISE teacher, who came to us from Mindes, Amy Westerland, ESP 2, who came to us from Warren, Haley Patterson, psychologist who started with us in March, but I don't think we ever formally introduced her, James Jones, new custodian who started with us towards the end of last year, and more district-wide, but housed out of the middle school, Michaela Warner is the new Administrative Assistant for the Special Education Department. So, thank you.
We are really excited to welcome Paula Cosquette as our new nurse, Cam Gallagher, who's our new Bright Academic Coordinator, Jared Jones, who is our new business teacher, who's here with us this evening, Kelly Meyer is our new Dean of Students, Sarah Riley, who's new to us but moved over from the middle school, Kevin Shelby is with our Special Education Department, Mark Quittadamo is new with our Facilities Custodial Department, and I'm happy to welcome Pete Conery, who is here with us tonight as our new Athletic Director.
Hope you have an excellent year. We welcome you anytime, but we don't have to be here for one minute longer. Have a nice rest of your stay. Thank you for coming.
For coming. We look forward to hopping into you this year.
authorized by my signature payable amount, I'm gonna talk about myself in third person there for a second, the amount of $2,681,687.91. This includes general fund expenses of $1,679,993.93, prevailing expenses of $884,659.88, and grant expenses of $117,773.84, and meals tab expenses of $160.26.
So the only thing I wanted to start with that, obviously, is the year's begun. We're in year three, year three, week three? Year seems like...
That's it?
It feels like the end of the year already, right? No, but I think, you know, we make light of, at this point we can a little bit, about Kate's start to the year. As you know, we did have an incident within the first 20 minutes of school this year where some students in our bus loop stepped onto, I'd like to call it the grassy area, but it hasn't grown any much grass, but a dirt area, and there was some, a ground nest of yellow jackets, bless you. And we had a number of students, ended up being about close to 57, 58 students, who eventually were identified as having been stung. Thank goodness, not one student was transported to the hospital, no other reactions other than just a little bit of swelling where they got stung. All their parents were notified. Kate, you know, I want to thank the Ashland PD, Ashland Fire, EMTs, our nursing staff, our transportation staff who immediately... We had one bus driver who also was stung, that they just handled everything with great care and caution, and not one child went home. All the parents were called. We had the opportunity, had the parents wanted a student to be transported to the hospital. No one took up that offer, which was great. And everything has sort of calmed down in that area as well, but Kate handled it beautifully, and I think a lot of kudos to her and the calmness with which she approached things was great. Yesterday, I attended the Superintendent's and Chief of Police and Chief of Fire breakfast in Lexington. You know, it's always neat to hear what is happening across the Commonwealth, and really the focus, it's put on by the District Attorney's Office in Middlesex. And, you know, a lot of focus continues to be on phone usage, sexting, texting, all those things. A very interesting statistic, which is not one I'm, you know, happy to share, but if you notice on the Pike in the interstates this summer, you notice about teen drivers and about accidents and fatalities, and there have been 20 fatalities in this eight-month period for under 21-year-old drivers this year. It's, the number is, I think she said, the max before was about eight through the same time period. So, you know, there's just a lot of talk about teen driving and distractions, and you know, that's the reason why you see that stuff on the side of the road right now. So as we talk to our kids at the high school, you know, and listen, I lived through it with a accident with my own son, this, you know, right two days before graduation. It's scary. It's teaching our kids to really focus on when you're in the car, focusing on driving. Mike's got one coming up very soon. So I think, other than that, we had our first admin team meeting yesterday. You know, I'm really excited about the team we have, and I think, you know, we have a couple of changes, obviously, at Mindes with Beth and with Kate. I think Mike and I visit it every day. The tone and tenor of that building is outstanding. You know, it's been great. Mike and I walk in, and we're like, where's Beth? Well, she's in reading to every classroom. She's already in meeting kids and with teachers, and it's really a neat thing to see. We started our meetings with the AEA and having conversations about, you know, making sure the year goes off smoothly and any concerns that they have that we're connecting. It's Kristen Scully, yep, still, and she and I meet every Friday morning, and then the building principals have standing meetings with their reps in the building, which is great. We will be coming to the committee. As you know, when we worked on the contract, we had a couple pieces that were outstanding. One was stipends, and the other was evaluation. And we're getting close with the stipend component of it to be able to bring back, share with the school committee for a vote. But obviously, first, we're gonna, the AEA has to clean some things up over the summer. We didn't have an opportunity to meet with them, so that's forthcoming. And I think that's pretty much it. It's year 12, and it was one of the smoother years, to be honest with you. We're still working on transportation. Yeah, you know what? Usually, I'm usually sitting here saying... give it three weeks, give it three weeks, give it three weeks. Well, listen, we're down to one or two buses that are, you know, habitually late. And by late, it's three to five minutes, not 25 to 30 minutes. And I was concerned when we opened the year with 1:35 being under construction in the paving. But kudos to the town and DPW in ensuring that that was all done before the first buses rolled out. You know, Chris's office in Tamara, who does the transportation, it's her third or fourth year doing this, and it's much smoother than it was previously. So, that's, that's a good thing. You know, Pete still has a couple buses at the Warren School that tend to be a little late in the afternoon. Kelly and Aaron have a couple in the morning that, as they cross town, right, might be a few minutes late. And what we consider late is, we want kids to have the opportunity to go have breakfast, and we want the kids, but it doesn't always work out that way with some of the buses. So, I know teachers are pretty flexible, and Kelly and Aaron make sure that staff know. But for the most part, Mark, it's been pretty good. Yeah. That's it.
I'll echo what Jim has said about a smooth opening. It's been fantastic. I may have dozed off for a minute, but I wanted to make sure, in case you'd missed it, as John Murray also stepped up quite a bit during that, during that incident. You know, our facilities department surely stepped up, and, you know, as did the board of health, to make sure everything, everybody worked together to make that go smoothly. In terms of general curriculum updates, you know, it's the first three weeks of school. We're off and running, but folks are spending the proper amount of time to get to know our students, develop relationships. It's the most important thing we can do here. We feel so strongly about SEL in our district, and I, as I walk around the school, I see all of those things happening. I want to commend the work that was done over the summer by our high school. SEL team put together a really fantastic event for our high school students. And I think it was one of the more well-received events in a long time, I think. The kids, the kids that took part in it really seemed to enjoy it a lot. And I think it was very well organized, and our new students got to know the school as well as get to meet some of their older peers, which was excellent. And as we walk around, we are seeing folks do the right things in terms of establishing processes and procedures for the school year to go successful. But we're also digging in, too, right? Because there is work to be done, and I've seen some great work already happening in the first few weeks. Teachers and staff members have reviewed our ALICE protocols with our kids. That's off and running already. And as we go through the schools, we've seen a lot of grade-level meetings, whole-school meetings. All these things are already happening to make sure we're establishing a great year. In terms of our assessment, that's off and running as well. The iReady assessment has already begun. That window has started. Especially at the middle school, they decided to incorporate something new this year, and they dedicated the first couple hours of the day today for the entire school to participate in our ELA iReady. And that was received very well by the students that we talked to and by the teachers. It's no longer taking, you know, three or four different periods away from math and ELA to complete that. Rather, it's one day dedicated to the ELA, they're done. For the most part, I would say about 90% of our students are completed with the ELA iReady. Next week, Aaron will dedicate that time to math. That day will be in our system, and we'll be ready to roll. The elementary schools do it a little slower. But I think Aaron was a great test run, and now we could even consider doing that, maybe at the Mendez as well, since the students can have that time. They're going to have to be doing it in the spring anyway. So, I think it's a good opportunity for them to build up some stamina in terms of assessment-wise. At evaluation, we're off and running there, too. Announced observations have started slowly, but they're going to pick up next week. Our principals and our assistant principals and our directors are going to be in classrooms, getting those accomplished. We know that we have lots of work to do there. And also, the educator evaluation committee will join up together again this year to continue the work that we started last year. We have the hopes of accomplishing that goal to make sure everything is together and in place for the end of the year this year. We'll be meeting in October to start those meetings again. In terms of professional learning, our first-year teacher orientation is always one of my favorite days of the year. We have a fantastic group of first-year teachers this year. We really focus on relationship building, and we want folks to understand how we work here in Ashland. So, we spend a lot of time doing that. Jane Guiney, who is our mentor coordinator, does a terrific job. She's my partner in crime for that day. And Kristi Arnold and Jen Taylor also do some significant work with our folks around getting them used to what Ashland, who Ashland is and who we are here and how we want our teachers to create lasting, positive relationships with all of our students. Also, I want to thank publicly Colleen Brewer for all the work she does to prepare for that event. The other main focus this year for us is to work on our district-wide multi-tiered systems of support. We feel like we've made some really nice strides in that area over the course of the last few years, specifically in the area of looking at data and having data-driven decisions be part of the process for us. And, you know, we've talked many times about the Warren School being a model, but it's now time for us to make sure that we're employing those strategies throughout our entire district. Our administrative team, as a whole, decided to read a book this year together. We read a book titled "Demystifying MTSS: A School and District Framework for Meeting Students' Academic and Social Emotional Needs" by Matt Navo and Amy Williams. And we took that book and established a framework for how we are going to implement MTSS structures, processes, and procedures throughout our entire district. And we delivered that through the work, some really great work by our administrative team, to our teaching staff on day one. And now principals are going to be moving that forward in a different pace in each building, depending upon where we are. But I'm really excited about the work that's going to be done there. It's also going to entail some different committees that will be together, a district-wide MTSS committee that will begin meeting in October, as well as some building teams as well. And finally, this year, we had 31 summer curriculum projects that happened, and they were all excellent, ranging from our brand-new business teacher spending time working on a business curriculum to make sure it was fitting the needs of all of our students, to folks working on AAC devices to make sure every student gets what they need when they need it. I mean, the gamut of things that happened over the summer was incredible. So, it's really been an exciting start. I think it's been one of the more positive starts that I've experienced here in district, and I'm excited to see what this year brings us.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike and Jim. Next up, we just need to appoint Jim to the board of directors for the Accept Collaborative. We've done this before. Somebody have a motion?
I move to appoint Superintendent Jim Adams to the board of directors for the Accept Collaborative.
All in favor? Aye. You're in.
Thanks.
Next up, Nutrition Services.
Hello again.
Hi, Regina.
Although this was discussed in June, it's kind of like Groundhog Day. The, I'm requesting that the adult meal prices are increased. The DESI, so we're in alignment with the DESI guidelines. Because we hadn't increased the adult meals price in so long, I forgot to take in account that the USDA meal guidelines, the formula we use, they increased it in September. So, I'll remember to wait till September to request for a meal price increase in the future. So, we are requesting that it be increased to $5.30.
That's for the adult meals?
For the adult meal, yes. You had agreed to it being $4.95 in June. But once again, the formula, the numbers have changed. So, that's the request.
Anybody have any further questions about that? Who's got a motion?
I'm not doing one.
I move to approve the adult meal cost as president.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Regina.
Thank you.
Use resolutions.
You're just making the minutes harder.
Okay.
Thank you, Regina.
Next up, Safety Committee appointments. That's one of the statutory committees, the safety committee. So, do we, remind me if we have one person on there or two.
Well, we had to, typically, we have one.
Okay.
So, we had, but then
I see.
The other second person was Aaron, so they're there.
Got you. Would you like to continue?
Sure.
Anybody else want to fight Paul for that job?
All you, Paul. I will move to appoint Paul Kendall to serve on the 25-26 Safety Subcommittee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Working groups and
So, we do have other members of the committee.
Right, so I was asking
Oh, we have to appoint the other members as well?
Be separately or not?
No, well, right. But we have, in the past, appointed school committee members separately. But we also have the list that Mike will read of the folks who
I'm sorry, I jumped into that.
It's all right. Yeah, it's not in your pack, and it shouldn't be.
Paul deserves to be singled out.
Mike can read the names.
So, the following, you'd like to have the following individuals be members of that safety committee. Amanda Curly, Peter Regan, Kate Altman, Erin LaChapelle, Kelly St. Kerr, John Murray, Brittany Hawkins, Chris Matthew, Chief of Police Kara Rossi, Dave Muri of the Ashland Police Department, Deputy Chief Lynn Morgan of the Ashland Fire Department, Paul Carpenter, Jennifer Taylor, Sergeant Kevin Pierce of the Ashland Police Department. And asking that Christina Molten could be a non-voting member, but we want to have her be able to come to meetings when necessary.
I don't know, Christine?
Christina?
What's her role?
Head nurse. She's the head nurse of the district.
Head nurse.
So, I would make a motion to approve the appointment of the safety committee members as
Listed, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, the working subgroups, we usually do that at the retreat. So, that, as a reminder, that's like site councils and any other. Jim, you have the
I have the list. I'll pull it up
Okay.
on the board here.
Anybody who wants to keep doing what they're doing, that would be great. If you're looking to switch it out, let us know.
So, these are the committees that we have traditionally had leadership roles from the school committee and
Tina, are you good still doing AshPAC?
Yep.
Should we, do we vote each time?
And have we done this, have we done this since you've been on?
We did, yeah.
So, you know the distinction of the subcommittees, your voting member and the liaisons?
Right.
Right.
I want to make sure.
My question generally is just, are are there any up here that are no longer necessary in terms of liaisons? And I'll be honest, AREA
Yep.
last year, I don't know the
Sorry. Yep, sorry.
So, just looking at the list and questioning whether or not, you know, their liaisons are appropriate for all these groups. AREA, as much as I support their work, they really didn't have, I think, one, Mike correct me if I'm wrong, this education subcommittee meetings at all. And so, I'm happy to stay in that role if they do anything. But I also think it's
Right, just so we don't have to keep automatically appointing people to things if they're not
Maybe one of those things that touch base with them at the end of the year, and if you guys aren't meeting them, we're eliminated. It's not that you couldn't change that later, but
Yeah, for something like that, we don't need it formal. They already know to reach out to Mike or Jim and say, hey, we want to do something and get the
I don't know that any of the others
Decisions, is that, I don't think we've appointed anyone to that in a while. You were on it at one point.
I've been, but I haven't, I haven't really been involved.
I think we can put those two on hold, and if we're asked to participate, we can certainly make that choice at any time. But we can take it off the list of automatic.
Well, I was raising the question whether or not there's a need for all of them. I also find, sort of, at least for myself, identifying as being that person so that if they reach out, we can just respond right away.
Do you just keep Paul there?
Yeah, I'm fine either way. It's been literally nothing for pretty much most of the years I've been on.
And we did skip policy up there, but I mean, unless somebody else besides Paul and I want to do that, we're kind of in the middle of still you going through the manual. Unless, Paul, you're looking for a break. I know you do a lot of the heavy lifting on that.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Jim's done more of it recently.
Wellness committee? I don't know who.
That's another one that, I think it was Aaron, honestly?
I don't remember.
That's funny.
Did we reappoint after?
We did, and I don't remember. It's Lori. Okay, there you go.
It was me.
It was LT.
I was just going to say, I'm happy to do it, but Lori, it's all you if you want to.
No, if somebody else wants a shot at it, I'm not, you know, do you want to?
I'm happy to. Yeah.
Great. The liaison committee, I think that was Lori, I think it was chair.
Yeah, I think it's chair and vice chair.
Ashland Site Council.
That's been you, Mark?
Yes, and I'm happy to continue. I'd like to, unless somebody feels strongly they want to.
Well, I think, Marc, are you on any of those?
I'm on the middle school.
Okay, is that something you want to, I'm only asking because I didn't know if you got to pick anything last year.
Yeah, no, I'm on the middle school, and I'm a voting parent, too, so I'll stay there.
Yep.
When you get tired of the high school, I'm happy to look into that.
At least one more year, and then we'll see what happens.
Mendez?
I can stay on that call, okay? Warren Pitterway was
Me.
Lori, okay?
I was the bilingual parent advisor council. They haven't really gotten going yet, but I'm still happy to.
Yeah, okay. Yep, I know that Christie's always trying that. And this was Mike, comprehensive planning.
So, the things we need to appoint, I don't think we've set terms on the subcommittees, so I think we're the only one would be the wellness committee to appoint Tina instead of
Right.
The other ones are staying status quo.
Yep, everything's status quo.
Right, so I would move to appoint Tina as our representative on the wellness committee.
All in favor? And Tina, that's like, it's not even once a month, right, Mike? It's like once a, we didn't have too many meetings last year.
We met quarterly, I believe.
Quarterly, yeah, and it's on my Zoom.
It's required by law.
Jen Taylor runs it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, awesome, thank you. Next up, MASC, MASs Conference.
Were there any achievers in the bottom half?
No. Everything's the same, yep. So, all we're trying to do is get a gauge so Gretchen can ensure that people are registered, hotel, et cetera, for the conference. It does not conflict this year with the Give the Kids a World trip. So, it's the 12th through the 14th. I know Mike and I have already signed up.
Give the Kids a World leaves them afternoon of the 14th.
Yeah, but so it doesn't conflict with Okay.
Like, I'm not usually there till the end of the conference.
That's a Friday, correct.
Yeah, so we usually leave.
Last year conflicted with the whole week. Yeah, that's all I meant by, yep. So, we just need to know so she can book things.
Are you working there this year, Mark? Are you there anyway?
Yeah, so I can say, I've already had my office, booked my hotel.
Okay, great.
I'm good. I will be there the 12th and 13th. Probably leaving my guests is more mid-afternoon, 13. Tracy and I are going to celebrate our anniversary in the morning of the 14th.
Great.
So, I won't, I may not, like, if we're doing a dinner kind of thing, I know it's a little ahead of it.
Yep.
I probably would not be there late on the 13th, but I'll
Wednesday's the 12th.
Probably would do the dinner on the 12th.
Well, usually Wednesday.
I honestly would probably leave Thursday if I'm leaving on Friday for Make-A-Wish. Thank you. This is, okay. I have to rely on others to tell me.
So, I just want to make sure I get numbers in terms of she can just register folks.
Yes.
Paul, yes.
My timing's the same, though, so I'll only be there for one night for the
The Wednesday night?
The Wednesday night.
Correct, okay.
And then I'll be leaving late afternoon Thursday.
Perfect.
Marcie's not a good time for it.
I had told Gretchen
Yep. I, we just, I think it's more double checking, so, okay. So, we will plan on Wednesday night for everybody.
Yep.
The four of you, for sure. And you already had your hotel, Marcie.
Yeah, I'm good with that. So, I just share a point of affirmation with people, because I've been talking with Glenn Kuchar, who's, as you know, the executive director for the MASC. They've changed a lot of this. So, there's no more Saturdays, where they got rid of that.
Can't believe anybody ever stayed.
Yeah. And then, and then there's, I looked at the agenda, because I think we all probably got it in the mail recently. The Friday looked a lot lighter than it did before. I don't know if that's the final agenda. But I looked at that as the day when I'm able to kind of just be free and clear as a school committee member, as opposed to the work stuff. There wasn't a whole lot there. So, for whatever that's worth, my understanding is this is the last year they're doing it. Because that facility's being sold and turned into something different. So, I don't know that, I haven't understood where I think it's going to be in the future, but I think it's going to look different after this year.
Interesting. Okay, cool, so that was just an FYI.
Yep, it's just more so I can do some planning with Gretchen.
School choice allocation for AHS auditorium.
Yeah, so, as I wrote, and I'll, Kelly, if you have questions about it, has I written the memo to you all that we've had struggles with the auditorium and sound as well as the projector for a number of years, and morgues aspiration occurred on opening day, at least for me, Kelly, from a safety perspective, in the cafeteria as well as in the gymnasium, the microphone systems don't work, and when they do, it's sporadic, we no longer have the ability to actually purchase microphones and/or parts for these systems that were put into the school in 2004 and '05, so it was, these are the original parts and original systems. So we looked into this last year, what I'm asking is that partly because we've increased our number of school choice students, we've got a little flexibility with our school choice funding that's coming in, this is, to me, a safety concern, it's also something Kelly uses the auditorium on a regular basis, we rent it out as well where folks are using the projector and the microphones, it's approximately $130,000, the quote that we received, and Chris and I feel comfortable at this point using school choice funds for this, you know, fix. I will say at town meeting, we do anticipate another $140,000 on our operating budget as well, from our Chapter 70 funding, it came in much higher than expected, a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than expected when we set the budget, so we know our policy, I have had that conversation with Michael Herbert, and that 140,000 will be coming, so it could offset, it could be an operating cost if you will, so we don't have to utilize the school choice funds, but we want to get this started, and that's the approach I want to take until.
And also, right, this is one of the things, so we are supposed to be, as part of town meeting, getting back to $250,000.
Right.
Now, what the mechanism is and whether it goes through capital or whatever that case is, we'll leave that to you, Michael.
Well, that's what we're trying to.
And to figure, figure out, but the hope is that neither this 140 or this 130 from there.
Correct.
It would be paid for from the reimbursement.
Correct, that's right, so we have a couple of things that we need to get done, this is one of them, the other is a student management software system, iPass has to go away, and Mike and I met today with Gretchen and another company to start really having conversation, it's not on the agenda, so we won't go there, but this is just for safety purposes for sure, Kelly, you can, if you want to chime in on that end, you're the one who deals with it daily, so.
Yeah, I mean, you commented already, we have traditionally had two to three microphones that we can use in different spaces, we're down to the point of having one microphone that does not work, we've spent every day in the cafeteria since we started, just kind of having to yell and dismiss kids, or, it's usually a place where we're providing information to students and, you know, using the microphone to move them in and out of the space, and we haven't had the ability to do that this year, which is concerning to me if there was a legitimate emergency.
Sure.
That's right.
I was just gonna say, two points, and I'm fully supportive of this, one is, it's a one-time cost, so that makes it more palpable in my mind using school choice funds, and the other is, is you're building out your pricing for renting the auditorium, maybe we can talk about how we use the depreciation value to build like replacement into your pricing.
Sure.
I was saying the same thing, Marcie, you are sort of, if there's, it's one thing to use the space, but if you're using the equipment, is there a supplemental charge, I don't know if we do this already, charge for the use of the AV equipment that kind of can build in.
We can talk offline.
Yeah, no, no, we have a policy that we started working on last year, there's going to be a lot more to this in terms of rental policy that will come before the board this year, it has to get done partly because of the fields as well as internal, so, but again, that's not on the agenda for tonight, so it's just, this is how we're gonna.
Right.
And I assume you probably already did this, but I want to just say it anyway, that I hope we're not looking at this as just like, okay, we need to replace this, let's get a quote for this, but also take a step back, work with Paul Carpenter or whoever and say, well, we're going to be doing this, what else should it be able to do, what are the, if we were just doing it today, what would we do, and if it goes from 130 to 140, then that's a better investment than just saying, hey, we've replaced it, right, and then, oh yeah, we need this, and now that's 20 or 30,000 dollars when it would have been.
Yeah, no, we have, we have exhausted this, we've had numerous.
You know what you're dealing with, yeah.
Quotes, you know, numerous, we had three initially, and then Paul has gone back out this year, he's been integral in these conversations, again, we're not replacing, we're not dealing with all the soundboard of the lighting, and that's not part of this package, it's really about the sound system, the AV piece.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about whether you have the cost, it's more like functionality.
Correct, and we are.
Ensuring that.
Yep.
A year down the line or two years down the line, somebody's like, man, I wish you did this, yeah, we could have done that.
Well, we've had these conversations about having the potential of the AV equipment being Bluetooth, talking about, just sort of like Mendez, how we have it, wireless mics, meaning, you know, not handhelds, things of that nature, those are all parts of conversations in quote that Paul's getting.
Maybe not all just Bluetooth, but you wanted that Wi-Fi thing.
Yeah.
We've had some issues with it.
Right.
We've learned from that one a little bit.
So, I'll move.
There was not a.
Move to allocate $130,000 from school choice revenue for the purposes of investing in, translating here, safer, reliable, modern communication system in the high school. Period.
Yep.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say, did you vote?
It's quietly.
Make sure for the record. I mean, I read your mind, I knew that you said yes, but I just wanted.
And our last agenda item is our traditional, wait a minute.
Those, we have school choice allocation to buildings and departments, what's that?
Every year, we have school choice funds that we budget, that we give a different amount to each building and department. It's nothing new, it's the exact same amount that we've allocated in previous years. Now, it'd be a great question to say, hey, Jim, why don't we, you know, costs have gone up, why don't we allocate more as we're getting more students in school choice, we most likely will do that next year, but this was the amount that I had counted on as part of the budget for the cycle.
And we typically do things in arrears because we know we have.
That's right, so we're, so this is, these are the numbers, it's $153,000 total out of school choice, and all the numbers are the same from previous year.
Just any brief explanation, Jim, as to the variation among the schools?
Yeah, we've had this conversation for 12 years.
For the new people, Tina.
No, so for the most part.
Viewing audience.
What we might say is Warren has three grades, the high school has four grades, the middle school has three grades, and traditionally, the numbers have, based on the grade level, more money has been allocated to those, and more kids who typically would be at the high school for choice kids, the money, for lack of a better phrase, following the kids, that's not necessarily going to be the case in the future because we opened up a lot of seats at the elementary levels this year, so those numbers are going to change significantly, so we have not filled them all, it's a great question, and I brought this up earlier on my sheet, so we currently have, Tina, from school choice, 66 students in school choice, that's an increase of about 20 students from last year, it's significant in terms of what will be a dollar value for.
Do we have any idea, because we typically open, and not all the seats are, you know, are filled, and so it seems like, you know, we had an increase, but we know why, is it that where we opened up more seats?
It's where we opened up, for sure, right, kindergarten, we opened up 10 seats, we are at, I shouldn't do that, sorry, names are up there, why I keep sharing everything, we filled just about all of those seats, right, and for the most part, we still have a couple open, freshmen are all used up, maybe have one or two open left in the senior class of the five, but, you know, I can get that information for the next meeting, we don't have, part of our policy, we have to change our policy or create a policy, it puts a finite end date on choice in terms of acceptance.
And we can, we can do that.
We can do that, right, we just have never done that, so, and it makes, it is a challenge, right, people are still calling, but there are some seats that are closed, so, because we don't have any openings.
Right, well, because, because also, it's, is it, I can't recall the process that we're supposed to follow, but I know, was it first come, first served, or was it?
No, it all depends.
Isn't it supposed to be, if you get more, then it's a lottery?
Correct.
So, but if we don't have a line, how do you know when more is, you have to have a line, otherwise.
Right, because you're, I thought, right, so if you got to fill seats by July 15th, you're not waiting until August 15th to figure out whether you have more than.
Well, we have a line in terms of when they can initially apply, yes.
But Paul's point is, from a technical perspective, if you're really waiting to find out how many you hadn't told, you kind of have to wait till the year's over, right before you decide, so the question is sort of like, when do you make that decision of whether a lottery is necessary or not?
Yeah.
And I don't forget that.
We do, it's in the, it's in the application, initial application.
So we do that.
June, May 30th, and then June, June 1st.
Okay, so, but we don't, we just don't tell them, we just don't have an end date for, hey, you've been offered, and you have to tell us.
Right, so we have never, so it's the initial, school choice is open through May 30th, then we select June 1st, but we've traditionally, over the course of time, if those seats were never filled, we have just left it open, so if somebody wanted to come in and apply, a family moves in the summer, and there's a choice seat open, we've allowed it to occur.
Okay, and does the, does the statutory stuff allow us to do that?
To close it or to keep it open?
Well, to keep it, keep it open and then let them in, because, I mean.
Yes.
Because the whole purpose of it is, so that, so that we let them in, we let the next person, now we don't have, see if somebody calls, we didn't do the original thing of, now that part becomes a first come, first served.
Well, because there's no, there's no way, you don't have to do a lottery for those seats that are still open, so it's like you take each grade, so let's say there's five seats for kindergarten, you get seven applications, so you have to do a lottery for kindergarten, but then if those are all filled.
Right.
You're not worried about people getting in.
It's a good question, and that's why I, we have, we have, it's a great question, and I think that's where Gretchen and I have had these conversations about policy, in ensuring that we are, we clearly and explicitly state, on this date, school choice is closed, period.
Because as we're doing it right now, my question is exactly what you're saying, is does statutory, does it allow us, because essentially, we moved to a first come, first served for the remaining things, but.
Yep, right.
But if you had three, and then a fourth, you filled them, and then the fourth one, they didn't get that lottery system, so I want to make sure that we're doing it, because if the, if the rules don't allow us to do that, then we need to, we need to set that and say it's done, right?
Agreed.
My recollection, Paul, is that the only sort of statutory deadline is the May 1st deadline by which we have to establish the number of seats and which grades they're in, I don't think it speaks to the rest of that, I can't tell you that I've ever had reason to, we'll consider if there are regulations on that or not.
The regulation I'm talking about is more.
No, I understand.
The process of like, hey, you have to do the lottery, but after we do that initial one, then we're doing, we're switching to a first come, first served basis.
Right, right.
I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
Right, nor do I. But we do, and that's why Gretchen and I have said we need to actually write a policy
Right, the policy would be helpful, I mean, I would argue that as long as, that as long as there are still seats open.
Correct, and that's how, and that's how we've always viewed it.
Right, but you could argue, you could argue with the opposite side of that.
Correct.
The next person saying, hey, what the heck, I should.
Well, right, right, because it then becomes, you know, again, and we do have a policy for seniors who leave at a certain time, they're allowed to stay.
We need a motion, please.
I move to approve the school choice fund allocations to the different schools and departments as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're done, we're to the end, so reports of committee members, we probably haven't done much school-related stuff, but if you want to fill us in on how your summer was, we'd love to hear it.
Yeah, so it's been a great start of the school year at Ashland High School and the rest of the district schools, at the high school, we just had a, an amazing convocation where we started the day with the scavenger hunt, a new revitalized format, a lot of the kids I talked to, they really loved it, and as always, we got kids running around, bumping into each other, but it's a great time, everyone's trying to win the prize.
Who won?
I think it was Ms. Wolf's class, yes, so shout out to Ms. Wolf.
Awesome.
And then seniors had convocation where we climbed up on the, the town's brand-new fire truck, and so that was a great experience, we all took pictures and had a barbecue, and then we got to go home early, so that was great.
Sounds like the perfect day.
Oh, yeah, and our class president, Erin Wolf, received the key to the school in the senior class meeting, so other class meetings have also been going on consistently, seniors started first, and then freshmen, sophomores, juniors, we also have kicked off our senior leadership, our senior college planning seminars, and I don't know, did juniors start yet? All right, so freshmen and seniors have started their college planning seminars led by the counseling department, so that's great, what else? Academics have been going great, we dove right into it, and other than that, that's pretty much all it is for the high school.
Awesome, how was your summer, what did you do?
Oh, it was great, vacationed a lot, was in the weeds for college admissions, but other than that, it was, it was good.
Awesome.
Just running around like a chicken with my head. But I will say, Mike, both my boys came home from ELA testing this morning, and they too liked the one stint of testing, so there's two more in favor.
Excellent.
Yeah, I don't have much of an update, but I was able to go to opening day, which was for the beginning of it, which is always nice to see the energy and the excitement of the faculty and staff all coming back together, and so it was nice to be able to be there to see that kick off.
Yeah, I joined on opening day as well, that'll be smooth, and definitely some great energy there, one update, so I will echo, by the way, the kudos to really everybody involved in the opening day stuff, I had the opportunity, I'll explain in a minute, to be at a select board meeting and expressed the gratitude for the, essentially the community collaboration on opening day, that I think a lot of the news agencies came wanting some really juicy bad story, and really what they walked away was, was, you know, just about the community we have here, and how professional everybody was and collaborative, and so kudos to everybody involved, but to the reason I was at that, at that meeting, so the select board, at my request, reconstituted the building committee to be a smaller group, and so we're keeping two of the community members, the other ones issued their resignations, and I just want to express again my gratitude to them, we're at a point in the process where, you know, it's rote, it's not a lot of things that require a lot of people's time, they have a lot better things they can do, so, so that also occurred, so that that's happening, and as I mentioned before, so the $250,000 should be able to be clawed back via the reimbursement that we got from the IRA funding, so hopefully that'll make it to the warrant and be able to fund those two projects that you mentioned.
And Paul, what was the award that Mendez, like one of the architects or somebody, got an award?
Yeah, there was a citation award and the, what is it, university and school, I can't remember the, it seemed so long ago that I didn't send that, but yeah, I didn't even know that they had submitted, so the architects, you know, submitted, and we got a citation award, and I don't know, did I show that, I have a link to the whole publication as well, not just the one article, so you can kind of see the other programs, and it's interesting to see all of them and where we fit in, and really just celebrate that, celebrated our shared space, our common spaces and the vision we had there. Celebrated our shared spa, our common spaces and the vision we had there. So congratulations to the team on that.
Awesome.
Other than attending opening day, I don't really have anything to share.
I also attended opening day and I echo what's been said, ready for a great year.
Do adjourn.
So moved.
I'll have a heated, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, good night, everybody.
My bad.
Oh, that's her job.
Have a good night.